Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting, Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr.
Here.
Mrs. Monroe.
Here.
Ms. Wyatt.
Here.
Mr. Schop.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Messer.
Here.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Please stand for our color guard.
Colors. Oh. Present, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry colors. Forward march.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for your kindness to us. We thank you for your love and for your forgiveness through your son, Jesus Christ. We ask just now that you would help us to live our lives in a manner that will bring glory to you, good attention to you. We ask that you would give us wisdom in making decisions concerning our city. Lord, we pray that you'd watch over all those who are watching over us, that you would keep them safe, that you would give them joy in their work, and that in all these things, you might receive all the praise. In the name of Jesus, we ask it. Amen.
Amen. All right. If you would first take a look at consideration of work session meeting minutes for November 18th, 2019, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And consideration of our organizational meeting minutes, December 5th, 2019, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt.
abstain.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And our work session meeting minutes for December 5th, 2019, and a motion to adopt. What?
Sorry. No, you're good.
It's our work session.
Yep.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt.
abstain.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And consideration of regular meeting minutes, December 10th, 2019, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Schaefer.
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
All right. We'll go on to recognition of visitors, and I believe Ryan Tassif, you are here, and you'd like to, I believe, sign on Mulberry.
Yes.
Yeah, before I say that, just wanted to let you know, thinking about Cecilia, and giving her my thoughts.
She's doing well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep.
She's watching right now, so that's good. How are you guys doing? I'm Ryan Tassif. I live at 116 Mount Street. I'm here today talking in reference to a business that my wife and I own, Lampos Cheese, which is on Mulberry, and also relevant to other businesses that I've talked to and that I've not talked to, also on Mulberry. Give me a moment to describe some of the context. About several years ago, when we had the Think Downtown Master Plan to describe what was going to happen in the downtown area, I know there was this idea of further development on Mulberry Street. I think that was one of the first projects that was kind of thought about around there. And I think, and correct me, I'm doing all this from memory, so City Manager can correct me on any numbers that I get wrong. But I think it was about a year ago when that sort of materialized into a plan for some development on that street, which was going to include, which did include funding from ODOT grant for safety, and included some funding for roadway repairs, and it also included about $400,000-ish dollars for economic development. That came out of a very specific fund, which was the racetrack fund, and that had very specific limitations around it. It had to be done for economic development, had to be done in a certain area in a certain time. What I want to talk about is what actually was planned and what's happened and what I think hasn't happened. And what was planned, as far as I saw from economic development, was to really try to make the street nicer, which was supposed to benefit everybody on the street and draw in more people, particularly people from Broadway down that area, and hopefully turn into more customers. The road definitely needs help in that area. It doesn't have a lot of foot traffic, particularly once you get past the second block on Mulberry, and so this is very much appreciated. The two major things that I saw were the road pavers and a large arch sign that was going to be constructed on Mulberry that went across the road, very visible from Broadway Street, and with a sign, you know, people know, like, hey, there's something over here. Come down here. I have said it multiple times, I was not a major supporter of the pavers, which are now there. The sign is still not there. And I believe that most of the project was finished about six months ago. And to give you a context on what happens in six months for a business is, we had summer, which is a time when people are out and about. We had the holiday season. Further context, and there's lots of reasons for this, but the business next to me is gone, the business next to them left, the business catty-cornered to me sold, and we actually put our bar on a temporary hold right now, except for special events. There's lots of reasons for all of these things. But economics clearly plays a role to some extent in them. And clearly, the council thought that this aspect, a sign, for example, was economically important enough to devote economic development funds for it. So I'm just curious as to what happened, since the road, which was a complicated project with pavers and a lot of work, was able to be finished more than six months ago, and there's no sign, which I thought was the most beneficial aspect of the program.
Do you want to address?
Yeah, I can address that. So those projects were bid out separately. You know, the construction side of it was bid out as a separate contract from the sign, the sign project. Any contract that's over $50,000, you know, through the city has to be bid out. So we went through a bidding process on the sign. We had one bidder submit, and the city did enter into a contract last year with that company to construct and install the sign. We specified the sign to make sure that the posts matched the street lighting, which would kind of, you know, directed it towards Sternberg-only type manufacturer. So all of our streetlights are Sternberg posts or street poles. And so that's what we specified for the, you know, for the support poles, and then the arch is being custom manufactured. The sign company is, has been delayed by Sternberg, who is the post manufacturer, in terms of when they are actually able to get those posts manufactured and delivered. Right now, what they're telling us is it's going to be March when it's completely done, and we'll be able to install it. It is, it's not your typical, obviously, it's not your typical light pole. It's structural, you know, it's going to have to support the archway, so it's a little bit more complicated than, you know, what you would typically think with the Sternberg poles that we use, usually deal with. But that's been the delay. We've been a little bit frustrated, you know, with the contractor as well. Unfortunately, when you put it out to bid and you have one bid, we don't have a lot of other options in terms of, you know, how to procure that. So that's where we're at with it right now.
Well, you know, we appreciate the investment, and I just wanted to add a sense of urgency to it.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's a point well taken. I mean, you know, that was, as we took a look at all the components of the renovation of that street, and being user-friendly, and really helping with economic development in that. I am definitely looking forward myself, kind of the icing on the cake in terms of how that all comes together, and that's a very important part of it. And kind of, it is frustrating, but when you have one, when you have one bid, and...
One supplier.
One supplier, and then one hinges on the other. But it's, it's, point well taken.
If you need someone to help nag, I'm totally available. Thank you.
Believe me, we have.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our public hearing for rezoning of 18 acres on Neil Armstrong Way. I know Mr. Brunka has some slides. So should we do that first and then open the public hearing? Or just go ahead and open up the public hearing? So let's have a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Turn it over to Mr. Brunka.
Thank you, Mayor. Projector's warming up here real quick. Okay, so as the mayor said, this is a public hearing for a map amendment for property along Neil Armstrong Way. The applicant is Toll House Farms Incorporated, and we do have a representative here from both the property owner and the developer of this project. Currently, the property is owned residential 1 CC or R1 CC. The proposed rezoning would be to a residential R2 zoning district. So right now, the parcel in its entirety is, you know, what you can see with the dashed red line. This is Franklin Road, Neil Armstrong Way. This is the entire parcel. What's actually being rezoned is just a portion of that. So that's the solid red line represents the parcel that would actually be rezoned and part of the proposed development plan. Right now, it's vacant. The surrounding land, you know, currently, Autumn Ridge subdivision's being developed to the south of it for residential purposes, and then you also have residential kind of right over here as well. So this is the concept plan for the property that's subject to the rezoning. The proposal is for a senior living community. Part of that development will be 94-unit, single-story assisted living facility that does include a memory care residence. So this is really the trigger for needing a rezoning to allow for this type of density within the residential zoning district. This assisted living facility would have a central dining room, club room, theater, activity room, fitness center, and beauty salon. In addition to the main assisted living facility, there will be 52 independent living garden homes that'll be clustered. Each garden home will consist of two bedrooms, two bathrooms, an attached garage, and a covered porch. My understanding as a developer does anticipate building all of this as part of one phase at the same time. So again, you can see this parcel right now currently is zone R1 CC. The request is for an R2. The R2 zoning allows for 10 dwelling units per acre. Right now, based on the current development plan, the density would be about eight units per acre. So it'd be under the maximum density. These are some elevations that have been provided by the developer to kind of give you a sense of what it will look like. And I believe the official name is the Traditions of Lebanon. That's what you guys are going with? Yeah. So Planning Commission has considered this request and did unanimously approve the rezoning request. Staff is obviously supportive of that request as well.
Great. Thank you. Motion to, oh, this is an opportunity. If anyone would like to at all speak to the issue, supporting or non-supporting, Portovic can come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and share your thoughts or feelings. Anyone here this evening that would like to speak? In saying that, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead to move on to regular items. Previous business, ordinance number 2019-103.
Oris, our 2019-103 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Innovative Software Solutions Incorporated.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve an agreement with Innovative Software Services Incorporated in the amount of $77,479 for tax division software.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to new business, number one, ordinance number 2020-001.
Ordinance number 2020-001, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $600,000 in fire truck acquisition bond anticipation notes by the City of Lebanon, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the issuance of a $600,000 bond anticipation note for the purchase of a new fire engine as provided for in the 2020 operating budget.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment?
I just want to again publicly acknowledge Chief Johnson, I keep wanting to call him lieutenant, Chief Johnson's ability to find these vehicles at such a great rate. It's a demo. And the difference in this truck is, and I know we just bought one recently, but this one's fully equipped. In my 30 years, I never saw a truck sold that way. This is a huge, probably the best value that we've ever gotten on a truck, and I think he's, kudos to him for the work that he's done to find these to keep costs down for us.
Great. Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes. Number two, ordinance number 2020-002.
Oris, number 2020-002, an ordinance amending Chapter 152 of the Codified Ordinances Providing for Income Tax.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will amend Chapter 152 of the Codified Ordinances Providing for Income Tax Distribution in accordance with the 2020 operating budget. And again, as we mentioned throughout the budget process, this really represents a shift in taking 2% of the income tax revenue and shifting that into the capital improvement fund to support our road program.
Great. And a motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we'll see this legislation at our next meeting. Number three, ordinance number 2020-003.
Ordinance 2020-003 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a compensation agreement with the King's Local School District and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize a compensation agreement with King's Local School District as it relates to the ADVIX Community Reinvestment Area Agreement.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
And I believe a second. Thank you. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Number four, ordinance number 2020-004.
Ordinance number 2020-004 is an ordinance of the City of Lebanon, Ohio, approving an amendment to the official zoning map thereof to 18 plus or minus acres of property located south of State Route 123 and west of Neil Armstrong Way, Lebanon, Ohio, 45036, parcel number 121, 220045, from residential 1 CC or R-1 CC to residential 2 or R-2.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve a zoning map amendment to rezone 18 acres on Neil Armstrong Way from residential 1 CC or R1 CC to residential 2, R2 zoning, to support the proposed Leo Brown Group senior living development as recommended by Planning Commission.
And this is taking a first reading, correct?
Yes.
So a motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sure.
Great. And we will see this legislation at our next meeting. And I would just say that very much, as part of planning, very much supportive of this project. So moving on to five, ordinance number 2020-005.
Ordinance number 2020-005 is an ordinance to approve the record plan for the right-of-way vacation plot of North Broadway Commons and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way at 511 North Broadway Avenue in support of the redevelopment of this corridor as recommended by Planning Commission. And essentially, this vacation of right-of-way allows it to match the right-of-way width at either side of this property.
All right. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Number six, ordinance number 2020-006.
Ordinance number 2020-006, an ordinance to approve the record plan for the final plot of North Broadway Commons, Section 2, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve the final plot for the North Broadway Commons, Section 2 subdivision, as recommended by Planning Commission.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Number seven, ordinance number 2020-007.
Ordinance number 2020-007 is an ordinance to approve the record plan for the final plot of Cardinal Acres subdivision and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve the final plot for the Cardinal Acres subdivision as recommended by Planning Commission.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes. Number eight, ordinance number 2020-008.
Ordinance number 2020-008 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Lebanon Police Employees Association and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve a three-year labor agreement with the Lebanon Police Employees Association.
Mayor, if I, if I might. This actually, as council is aware, the LPEA agreement is actually an agreement with three sort of sub-units. This approves the labor agreement with regard to two of those units, the patrol officers and the dispatchers. The supervisors unit has not adopted the agreement by a majority vote yet, so this would apply only to two out of the three subgroups.
And when that happens, then it'll come to us.
Yes.
Great. All right. So a motion to adopt.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
All right. Number nine, ordinance number 2020-009.
Ordinance number 2020-009 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the Lebanon Professional Firefighters Local 4796 of the International Association of Firefighters and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve a three-year labor agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 4796.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you want to say anything else? All right. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Schop.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
All right. Number 10, resolution number 2020-010.
Resolution number 2020-010 is a resolution requesting the county auditor to amend tax advances during the year 2020 pursuant to Section 321.35 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will request 2020 tax revenue advances from the county auditor. This is something that the city does every year routinely.
Okay. And, Mr. Brunka, did you want to say anything?
Just that, so everybody knows, the, this process is required in order for us to get the income, excuse me, the property tax money from the county auditor faster than we would typically do. So, yes. That's it.
Great. Thank you. So this will be a first reading, so a motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Actually, that's a resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution, so a motion to adopt. Sorry.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. That is correct. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schop?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to city manager's report. Mr. Brunka, anything tonight?
Just a few things, Mayor.